Good evening. I think we have very live mics today, tonight, so you don't have to be as close to them, I guess, as we normally are. I welcome you to the January 10, 2017 Board of Education meeting, regular meeting. Present is Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Maxen-Cannelli, and Mr. Llewellyn. I think we are expecting the other three board members, but in the interest of time, we will get going. If I could have you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As most of you know that this is the meeting in which we hear from the superintendent on the proposed budget for 2017-18. Also, you'll see under Superintendent's report, an update on the racial imbalance plan, so that Dr. Jones can report out the results of the meeting we had up in Hartford with the State Board of Education. And specifically, under Committee and Liaison reports, I'll be updating you on Holland Hill, not for debate and discussion and all the rest, but just to bring you up to date as to where we stand. So, having said that, let's get on to student reports. And we have all, both schools represented. Why don't we go with Ward this time, because instead of always leading with Ludlow?
Hello, I am Ashley Aggelo. Brittany couldn't make it tonight, unfortunately, but hopefully next time. I'd like to start off with a follow-up from last meeting, a question that Mr. Patton had addressed regarding a music festival thing. So apparently, that was a fundraiser for the music department to raise money for the choir trip to California in April. And there were lots of vendors, and it was very well attended, so that was great. Second of all, we had our Christmas break. Happy New Year. We're starting off the New Year with strong academics. College applications are finally done, and the students are happy to be back. We have our midterm preparations going on right now. Our students and teachers are getting ready, preparing for the actual test, and lots of studying is going on. Over the weekend, we hosted the wrestling tournament, and 17 schools attended, but we were number one. I'm sure that the other schools performed very nicely. Over the holidays, we had a basketball tournament. Ward had beaten Notre Dame and prepped to win the championship of the holiday tournament. Two students in particular are specified here. Marcel Parsons was selected for the all-tournament team, and Sean Conway earned the MVP of the tournament, so congratulations. Before our break, we had five Carillon performances, similar to Ludlow's candlelight performances. We had two for in-schools for the students, and three for the public, one of which the eighth graders from the middle schools and the alumni, old Ward alumni, were able to attend. And in a couple weeks, we have our auditions for Spring Musical Oklahoma coming up after midterms. We forgot to mention before, but in the fall, we had a fall production of Antigone in November, and it featured some of our best actors. So I highly encourage coming to see our production of Oklahoma in the spring. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Aggelo from Ward High School? Okay, thank you. Next.
Hi, my name's Catherine Bajadi. Happy New Year. I hope everyone had a great holiday break. So first off, our headmaster, Mr. Hatzis, coordinated the second LGBTQ forum for students to openly discuss regarding gender identity expression and/or sexual orientations. The students met with the counselor from the Triangle Community Center to share stories of what life is like for them at FLHS. The counselors then attended the next faculty meeting and shared insights on fostering an exclusive supportive community in our classroom. So that was a great event to have, and we learned some valuable insight on what's happening at Ludlow. And then, second off, Rachel Keeler, the family and consumer science department liaison, reports that the Connecticut State Department of Education has recognized Fairfield Ludlow High School as the number-one ranked community, sorry, number-one ranked Connecticut secondary school in the textiles and design area of concentration. The family consumer science teacher, Ms. Donna Huber, teaches textiles and design, and as one of her students for four years in both the design and merchandising programs, I believe it is a truly amazing and really gifted opportunity to have such, like so many resources handed to us at Ludlow. So it's a great program, highly encourage people to do it, even if it's just to learn to sew a button or anything, just lifelong skills that are very handy. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sean Oppenheimer. I'm from Fairfield Ludlow. And Dr. Jones, I hope you enjoy your first month in Fairfield. I know you have a bunch of important decisions to make coming up, like when's our first snow day going to be?[396.03][396.03](Laughter) What are the limitations of our senior prank going to be? And are seven class cuts too many or not enough? So to start out, midterms are going to start on next Thursday, on January 19, and they're going to go Friday, and then Monday and Tuesday. We're going to do two midterms a day, and it counts for 20% of your mid-year grade and 10% of the final grade. And if you look at midterms, it's the best part of the year to see people with red eyes from a lack of sleep, stress breakups, and tears from people who realize their GPA will not be the same. So next, we have Core Selection Night. It'll happen on January 25, where parents will have the chance to hear from the school's administration on what courses their students will have to choose from. And I know students will be going to a similar presentation in one of the following school days. And students will have the ability to go look online to see what's the course syllabus, and even a sample assignment from the class itself, so they can see what kind of difficulty they can expect from the following year. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our students from Ludlow High School? Thank you very much. Please stick around for the budget presentation or take off at your heart's content. We're on to item number four, Public Comment. Any members of the public wish to speak to an agenda item, please step forward. Seeing nobody coming forward, then we'll move on to the next item, which is why you're all here. Presentation of the Superintendent's Proposed 2017-18 Proposed Operating Budget. And I believe we have a PowerPoint.
Mm-hmm, we do.
And so for those of us up here, we can move to the side and...
Well, good evening, Chair Dwyer, wherever you went, back here, Vice Chair Calabrese, and also Secretary Gerber, and members of the board, and our community and staff who are here tonight. I am delighted to be here in Fairfield and be able to present our budget for 2017 and Well, let's see, perhaps I will present. We had a lot of technical difficulties today getting set up, so I'm going to keep my fingers First of all, I just want to go through the presentation overview, so you know what you're going to be seeing. We're going to take a look at, first of all, how the budget was crafted. I think it's important for the community to understand that there is a tremendous amount of work that goes into the budget. What is a little bit of our revenue and spending history? And then, obviously, we spend the next few months really digging into this area. A little bit of our enrollment data, enrollment data that drives some of our decision-making. Also looking at what are the main budget drivers this year as we go into 2017 and 2018? What's included in this budget? Just the budget numbers at a glance, and the total recommended request. And then, what are some opportunities coming up for input very shortly? So first of all, how the budget gets crafted. We have a mission, and we have a mission for a reason, and that's where we want to start, because everything that we do is based on what we believe is best for our children. So when we're crafting a budget as a staff, we want to think about what's in our mission and how are we going to meet that mission? For our children to be lifelong learners, we want them to be responsible citizens. And I think the last part of our mission is probably the most important. They are in a changing global society. The world that our children are going to enter is very different than the world that we entered when we graduated from high school. And we want a comprehensive educational program. There are three components that I think are incredibly important that I present to you as a superintendent, and that is be thoughtful, mindful of the community. It's looking at what's happening at the local level, what's happening at the regional level, and taking that into consideration as we craft a budget. Also focusing on the priorities to accomplish the improvement plan that you've set forth through 2020. And then also to formulate a budget which maintains our great schools. And all three of those things are incredibly, sometimes in competing interest with one another, and difficult and challenging to do. The district improvement plan is focused on four areas of priority. The instructional programs, use of teams and data to increase effectiveness, leadership capacity, and that's building the capacity of our teachers and also our leadership, and use of resources. So anything that is in our budget should be meeting one of these four priorities. When we look at the budget process, it really starts in September for the staff. And the first thing we do is we go in and we examine the current budget. We look at staffing adjustments or changes that we know are going to need to be made. We look at our estimated fixed costs, and we continue to do that the whole first semester. What is the required staffing? What's going to happen with issues like health care? We meet with the headmaster, the principal teams at every level. We meet with the department leaders about their needs. We also gather local, state, and federal funding information. And I will say this year, this is incredibly challenging, because we had an interim superintendent until December the 5th. And so I do want to just pause and say how grateful I am to all of our staff that worked this first semester before their superintendent got here, because I'm only in my fifth week. And we also gather all of our enrollment projection data. And this is a needs-based budget, and that's how we approach our budgeting. Our headmasters, principals, and senior leadership team had an initial request, which is $2.2 million more than what I'm presenting tonight. And I think it's important to share that with you, because they were very conservative. I was actually very impressed with what they were bringing to the table, because they were things that they truly believed they need. But we still paused and went back and felt that if we're going back to those three components of being respectful of the community and understanding the time that we are in, that we needed to take one more deep look. But I feel like it's important that you know, everything is not in this budget. Our staffing budget priorities were very tight in that we are looking at what's mandated by law, what is a safety issue, and we feel like we need a position for safety, what's in the bargaining agreement, what does that drive in the budget, and special education and related services. When you look at how we calculate our staffing, one question a lot of people in the community have shared with me is how do you calculate your retirees? Staff worked really hard to, in this 2017-2018 budget, come up with a new methodology. And in this budget, we analyzed nine years of data, and estimation is based on all the historical patterns. And we have 23 retirees budgeted in this budget this year. That's an $828,000 component in the budget. And we feel good about that, because we've analyzed nine years of data. The number of staffing required in pre-K through 12 in this budget, we did use our Malone and McBroom projections, and an elementary reduction of 13.2 certified positions is what is estimated in the projections for us next year. In middle school, you'll see an increase of 8.4 positions. In high school, we have an increase of 4.35. Most of that is attributed to special education. And in district special education, behavioral support increase of 2.0. And I will say that last position unanimously, especially heard loud and strong from our elementary team of principals, those are two positions that we desperately need, and we consider those safety for us. And the certified increased total is 1.55, which is actually relatively low for us going into next fiscal year. The non-certified positions, most of these have to do with class sizes that are being reduced in certain areas, are 8.1 reduction. When we look at the revenue and spending history, you've seen this chart before, this is not new, but I felt like it was important to show you again, the Southern Fairfield County per pupil spending. And when we look at where Fairfield is, on that far left-hand side, we know that there's not a big pocket of money for us to have a tremendous amount more tomorrow. But I do think it is worthwhile to point out that our staff are working hard to do more with less with many of the school divisions that we are compared to in Southern Fairfield County. If you look at that average, the average of $18,781, I think it's important just to note, if we were just funded at the average, we would have almost $22 million more in our budget. Almost 22 million, that's a lot. When we look at where our spending goes, we know that in any school district, you spend about 75% of your budget on salaries and benefits. What I want to look at is are we spending our salary money in the right places? And what you see with that 74.6%, that's spending on teachers. That's where we want our dollars to go, in the classroom with our children. The next to the left of that, there's kind of a, looks almost a light brown, the 4%, those are those classroom supports, like pairs and positions that we need for our teachers. When you look on the blue, that section that says admin, we know that that's an area that we want to make sure that we stay and focus, and make sure that the spending stays focused where our teachers and our children are. When we look at our revenue, I think it would be remiss for me not to mention education cost sharing, because that is a big community discussion right now. And even though that money flows through the town side, obviously, it has an impact on the town, on the school system, and we are one town. And I just want to, as a reminder, because I know you'll hear this in the press about the cost sharing, in 2015-2016, we had $3.5 million from the state of Connecticut. When we started out in 2016, we already knew that that was reduced, and we started the year with that 1.6 million. We now know with the news we've had over the last two weeks, that that's going to be reduced farther by $570,000. And so when we look at our 17-18 budget, we're starting at that reduction number. We hope that's where it stays, but there's no guarantee, but we definitely would not go back higher than that. The reduction to date of just ECS revenue coming to the town is 2.4 million, and that's a tremendous amount of money. When you look at enrollment history, pre-K through grade 12 enrollment, what you can see is that we trended up for several years and hit a peak right around that 2011. We are slowly trending back down, but you'll notice there are not wild swings in one direction or the other. And what you're looking at in the 17-18 is our projected number for next year, which will still be at 9,894 students. And what you'll see in our enrollment actuals and projections by elementary and secondary are important, because when we talk about the positions that we're reducing or we're adding, this is why. When you look at the elementary, you can see that there's a reduction of 201 students. In middle school, they're going up. And in high school, they're down 18, which is almost a wash, because that's such a small number with so many students. But what's really happening inside our elementary and our middle, so we have a really large fifth grade that is moving to sixth grade. So when you see the reduction in elementary, that's a big reason why, 145 students. But at middle school, you'll see that 114 increase. And again, it's primarily one grade level. When we look at the budget drivers this year, there are six budget drivers. And the first one is contracted salary increases. So these are what come out of our bargaining agreements. We have 2.7 million that are in our bargain agreements for this year. Increase to health insurance, $1.9 million. And I do want to say that the move that we made to our health insurance last year has made a tremendous difference. This is right around 7%. Had we not changed, just as a reminder at our last school board meeting, we would have been looking at an increase of about 16% under the old plan, which would have meant we need another $2 million on top of this. Our pension and retirement increase this year is right around $300,000. We have increases to physical therapy and student services of $363,000. Transportation, and again, this is contracted cost increase, $255,000. We have magnet and special needs school tuition at $437,000. And some of you that follow the press know that when we talk about magnet tuition, that number is right around $219,000 that we will be paying next year that we did not have to pay previously for two magnet schools in Bridgeport. We were already paying for some of the other magnets, so I think that's important to note as well. But that is an increase. And these are all costs that we don't control in our budget. And when you add those up, it's $5.8 million, almost 5.9. So when we look at what's included, this is just to give you an idea of some of the school improvement planning and trying to balance our priorities. We have continued professional development for elementary mathematics. That is very, very important. We rolled out a new series this year. We need to continue to support our teachers. We have a six-day rotation in an effort to provide more planned time for our elementary staff. Again, that's very important, supported by all of our principal team. We want to increase that 2.0 behavior specialist, which I mentioned before. We feel like that's very important. That will give us a total of four for all 17 sites. Our six-through-12 professional development for social studies. We also have language arts curriculum implementation support, and also a focus on inquiry-based science. One thing we're not doing with the science, and I know I've mentioned this to the board, we're not investing in a lot of our new materials, because the next-generation Science Center materials are not available right now, and the state of Connecticut does not know what they're doing with standards. And we do not want to purchase a half-million dollars of materials and then becoming 24 months later insane, oops, we need to purchase something different. But we are going to stay focused on inquiry-based teaching. In our facility upkeep, our facility staff do a great job trying to keep up with our facilities. We are managing some aging facilities, but you will notice in the budget, there's a reduction of $268,000 in that area. We feel like that's manageable, but again, this is trying to be prudent about our spending. We are working to trim costs, and these are three big drivers in the budget where we've tried to reduce. We have about $100,000 in capital. We have that operations and maintenance. We have about 844 in supplies, techs, and materials. That is primarily because we were able to pre-purchase some materials last year in the spring, which has really helped us in the textbook category more than anything. So when we look at the proposed budget, this is the budget at a glance, and everybody usually wants to look right down on the bottom, what the budget increase would be and what the percent would be. It would be 3.12% is what I'm proposing tonight, and that is right around a $5 million increase. And again, you'll notice most of the things on the top that are not in bold, we have very little control on things like tuition. We have to pay those. And I want to remind you what the six budget drivers were, because just with the items, if we took a flat budget and then we had our six budget drivers that we know we don't have control over, that would be 5.8 million. So for us to be proposing an increase of 5 million means we went into our budget to find reductions of $1 million in our school operations before we put the budget together. And that was not easy for the staff to do. So what are some opportunities for community input? First of all, we have some immediate future dates. We have Brown Bagged Luncheon, which is this week, and it's in this room at 12 o'clock, and we welcome you to come and ask questions. And we have a special Board of Education budget discussion on January 17. We have another one that's coming up on the 24th. And then the board will adopt the 17-18 proposed budget on January 26. And then, obviously, there are more dates that will follow in the spring after that. So thank you very much. That is the Superintendent's Proposed Budget for 2017-2018. Thank you.[1511.41][1511.41](Applause)
So, yeah, we're going to be taking a short recess while the budget books are given to each of us. And you may want to talk about, the PowerPoint will be loaded on to the website when, and the budget books will be available to other members of the government when.
Anybody that is here tonight that is a member of the government and, obviously, school board, they are going to hand those out in just a moment. It will be on the web, we hope, first thing in the morning. We will get that up as quickly as we can. We do have a budget page formulated, where we will keep all of our questions and answers on the web.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't know the Fairfield way, so handing out the budget books, so...
Well, first, they're kept under lock and key.
I realized that.[1593.33][1593.33](Laughter)
Back to order now that the budget books have been distributed. We will follow the same format for the board that we have in the last couple of years, in that we'll start at essentially the front of the book and go over the executive summary, the revenue, and then walk through the budget until we get to line item review. So we'll have two review meetings, and then the third meeting where we approve the budget, there'll still be time on that meeting's agenda to have final discussions prior to taking a vote. As the board knows, and the public probably has grown accustomed to, we are required by town charter to present a budget by February 1st to the first selectman. The first selectman takes the month of February to look at the town side of the budget, the Board of Ed side of the budget, and then presents a budget, combined budget, both town and Board of Ed, by March 1st. And then a series of budget hearings are held by the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance in the month of March. And then they vote and pass the budget on to the RTM, who also hold a series of meetings, finally ending up in the first Monday of May with a budget vote. So that's the process that will be going forward. So normally, we do not go into great detail at tonight's meeting, but if there's any questions that board members have on the PowerPoint presentation that was made and some of the major numbers, now would be a good time to ask any questions. Mr. Llewellyn?
I do have one question about the magnet school funding and the $400,000. I thought I saw it on the slide, is that correct?
That was magnet and also special education tuition.
Okay. And I see in the book here on page, I guess, 10 or 11, it talks about it, as 200 and some odd. One of the things we had talked about in past meetings was the city of Bridgeport had looked to receive back compensation for past years. Has that gone away, do we know?
Somebody asked me that the other day, and I'll have to follow up again on that.
Okay, I'll find the articles.
Yeah. I did follow up with somebody yesterday and asked if there's anything that's supposed to happen this school year, but I asked it in a different way than what you're asking now, so...
My understanding is that the legislation that was passed allows Bridgeport to begin collecting, provided they give a year's notice. So they gave the notice last year that come this September, September of '17, they will start charging, as most districts in the state do, but they had not charged. And so I'd be very surprised if there's a little sentence in there that allows them to back-bill us, but we'll check.
I thought I heard that, so, okay, thank you.
Was that it? Any other questions that the board wishes to ask at this time? Mrs. Maxen-Cannelli?
This was just one very quick question. When you were talking about the 8.1 FTE reduction in non-certified, I did... When you were talking about the 8.1 FTE reduction in non-certified, I didn't hear the explanation of why. I'm sure it'll be covered in this, but I thought that I could clear that one now.
Yeah, and honestly, I would refer you to the budget book. I can send the page to you if you need to.
Okay.
This is, okay, Ms. Pitko.
My question has to do with education cost sharing. Do we have any indication in this school year that we're going to be losing more?
If I told you, then oh, they were going to double it, you wouldn't believe me, would you? At least all the conversation I have had with is that expect further reductions. And at the same time, I think every town is advocating for the maximum amount possible. And so we just have to wait and see what the governor's proposed budget is. We can only, in my estimation, we can only hope that if they're going to reduce it, that they make that fact known early so that we can take that into account in our budgeting and not do what they did last May, which is after the budget is approved, then tell us what cut they're going to have. So I wouldn't hold your breath, is I guess the phrase I would use.
And I might add, I did do a superintendent's conference call with superintendents across Connecticut with the state board. And the commissioner said that they are anticipating that, they're hopeful that the cuts will not be there. But the thing they also said was that they had no idea the last cuts were coming, literally until they came out. And so there really wasn't any leeway.
I'd like to make a comment and then ask through the superintendent to the Director of Finance or in between the two, if I'm correct. Last year, in looking at our health insurance costs for this year, the Board of Selectmen, together with the Board of Finance and RTM, ultimately all three bodies, approved using $800,000 of medical retention fund balances to be used to fund this year's insurance. And that still happened. And 800,000 is about a half a point, about, you know, half a point of our total of 163 million dollar budget. And so am I correct to assume that if it weren't that that balance sheet had been used to fund current expenses and that 800,000 was still in our budget, we'd be down in the twos for a percentage increase? Am I doing the math correct? The answer is yes. Thank you. Other questions or comments? If not, we look forward to next Tuesday for the beginning of our budget review.
And just to clarify, for next Tuesday, it would be a good idea to get to Dr. Jones' the questions ahead of time as much as possible?
Yeah, absolutely. Any questions that board members have, the more advanced notice you can give the staff, the better the information is that you'll get that night. And so please try and get questions in as soon as possible. And our staff have done, I think, a good job of responding as quickly as possible. They're set up to handle those questions, but the sooner you can get them in, the better. Okay, thank you. Old business, approval of the capital non-reoccurring projects. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the proposed capital non-reoccurring projects for 2017-2018. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mr. Calabrese as the secondor. And Mr. Cullen has come forward. Do you have any comments that you wish to make before we get into further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before I get started, for the record, Tom Cullen, Director of Operations, I wanted to make sure everyone had a copy of the non-recurring booklet here. I brought extras. And the questions with the answers, I brought copies of if you need them. Let me know.
Okay.
If not, we're all set.
Okay. Questions from the board on the projects? Mr. Llewellyn.
I'd actually like to move to table this vote until after we adopt the operating budget on January 26.
Is there a second? Ms. Carnell. You wish to advance argument as to why you wish to table it?
I do. I think they're in backwards order. I think that we should look at our operating budget first, understand where we come out with that, whether we need additional cuts or don't need additional cuts. I think that, given the climate at the state level and the cuts that have been coming down, I think that we may know a whole lot more. I think there's some projects in here that could possibly be deferred. So I would advocate waiting until after. I don't think there's any impending rush to do it ahead of it.
I'll, in conjunction with the other town bodies, the RTM, the Board of Finance, and the Board of Selectmen, I think it was three or four years ago, it was agreed that we would move the capital projects budget through earlier than the operating budget for a couple of reasons. One, by putting them essentially together, that was making it difficult for both staff and volunteer members of the boards to fully vet both sides. And then number two, if we wait until after the budget is approved or concurrent with the budget being approved, that puts the approval of these in roughly May and June, which then puts into jeopardy whether we can get the bid documents, get a bid, and get the work done over the summer, because we really can't do capital projects in school buildings when children are in them. And so the rationale for moving them into the January, February, the December-January time is so that we can also then take those capital projects, get them through the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the RTM, quote, "a month before the operating budget goes before them," and are able to then bid. So that was the rationale that all three boards, four boards had in creating the process that we're in now. You want to make a comment?
One follow-up comment.
Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I would be happy to amend my proposal to move it to February 14 so they don't come concurrently. And in terms of getting these through, it sounds as though Mr. Cullen and his team have done a lot of legwork on these already, so I have no doubt that if approved, they'll be able to get these things done on time.
Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I actually think that's a good idea because I think by doing this, it sends the message that the educational operating budget is a priority in terms of funding. And the list is, you know, it's set. We've gone through it already. I think at that point, everyone will know what the issues are and what the funds available are and any constraints. So if we want to push that forward, we're very good at moving things quickly through when necessary. And I think if we delay this just one month, it's not going to throw the whole thing, you know, I think, out of timeline. It doesn't have to. Of course, we can allow it to happen, but I can't imagine why we would need to. So I think it's a great idea for us to first understand what our existing funds are, have the operating budget approved, understand where the state comes out, and then based on what's available, then move forward. Because to me, the operating budget is our priority here.
Mrs. Gerber.
Well, I think one thing that's important for this board to keep in mind is that the month of March is taken up with all of the joint Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance budget meetings. They don't have any regular meetings in the month of March. So if we postpone this to February, they wouldn't even begin to see it until April. And then we're talking about May going to the RTM, and that's a little too close for comfort. So I think for those of us who go to the meetings in March, we know how full those are with the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. And I just think pushing it out that far would be problematic.
And I would agree with Mrs. Gerber's comments. Mrs. Maxon, Cunnelli.
And I also was part of the, I know we were having that as our discussion in the first year we were elected, this idea of this is too much to do at one time. And while I think it's an interesting request, I mean, just like with building committees, we're open to finding better processes to work, but until the other town bodies come to us and indicate as part of a partnership that the schedule needs to be changed, I don't see a compelling impetus for this. So we start hearing from other town bodies, then maybe this is something we need to consider. Until then, I see no reason.
Any final comments that people wish to make before we take a vote on it? Ms. Carnell?
I think Ms. Cunnelli makes a good point, but echoing. But has anybody reached out to other town bodies to ask them if that's a possibility? As Ms. Gerber said, we all put in a lot of time, the other boards, other town bodies in March, but so do we. And I think we continuously forget the priority is for the students. And we're going to have very limited money. We're going to have very limited money coming from the state. And I think the priority should be where we can best serve the students.
Do you wish to make a comment, Mrs. Gerber?
I guess just to respond to Ms. Carnell's comment. To respond to Ms. Carnell's comment, I think perhaps if the board members who made this motion had given us some advanced notice, we could have spoken to some of the other town bodies. But since this has just been made at the table, I don't see how we possibly could have reached out to the other town bodies, since this is a system that's been in a place for a few years for a specific reason. It used to be different. There used to be more difficulties with scheduling. It was changed to this schedule because this worked better for all the town bodies. So again, none of the other town bodies, to my rec knowledge, have said that there's a problem with this. But if board members at this board had a problem with it, perhaps they could have voted up before tonight.
Any final comments that, is this the final comment? Mrs. Maxon, Cunnelli.
Just one quick comment. I think it's very important that we as a board not think that having safety as part of this budget we're about to vote, if we do in fact vote on it tonight, I don't consider safety to not be a student priority. Just regarding Ms. Carnell's comments, I think we do have some priorities. There is a hierarchy of those, but to say that student safety and the facilities, that is part of the educational program we're putting forward. And these were the ones that were the, that finally made the final cut through Mr. Cullen. And it is an important thing that we have to address all of this in combination.
Okay, so if there's no further, can I make this the last comment?
Depends what's said.
Yours is the last comment.
Maybe more. Ms. Gerber, there, I never used the word safety. And there is a meeting next Tuesday, so maybe between now and next Tuesday, as the chair, you can reach out to the other town bodies. I don't think a week is going to make a difference.
Thank you. We're ready to vote. Before we vote, we'll go out to the...
Can you please answer if that is possible to get in touch with the other town bodies during the week?
Well, first, we have to decide whether we're going to table the motion and as to whether it's required or not. May it go out to the public to see if there's anybody that wishes to come forward and comment on the motion to table, the motion to act on the non-reoccurring. Mr. Becker. Yeah, you...
Thank you. Been a while since I've been in a Board of Education meeting.
Yes, we switched from a podium to here.
No, that's great. So David Becker, Board of Finance, when I was Majority Leader on the RTM, I actually sat on that committee. And do remember, it's probably about five or six years ago, when we last had it with that older process. And it did back up, and there were a number of issues that were cited, including a lot of projects, by the time it got to final approval, potentially in the May meeting, or if items were broken out, even into the June meeting. And then you had the waiting period for referendum after the approval by the RTM as the last body. You bumped out into the summer, then you went into the bidding process. And next thing you knew, you had projects that sometimes had to wait because of the issues noted about the school being in session, had to go out into the following year. Some projects, you know, could get through, but some of the bigger projects ended up having to drag out even further. So what we talked about doing was breaking it out, doing this before the budget cycle. And as part of, a lot of these projects that are listed out and the figures that are in place are also discussed during the capital planning workshop, which is done in September. And so the overall figure that's going to be brought forward is not a mystery to everybody. It's been laid out, it's been built into the waterfall. And it's something that, for the most part, although some of the specific projects, obviously reviewing them, is unknown to the boards. And by breaking it out of the budget process, which I think this year specifically is going to be very lengthy and difficult for everybody, allows for a much more detailed initial and passing review of these projects. Capital is one thing, the budget is another, and the roll-up into the budget is really the capital planning workshop. So I certainly would prefer, and I think most of my colleagues throughout the other boards, based upon the previous decisions and the work that that committee had done, would like to see these things stay where they are and then the budget be reviewed separately. So, thank you.
Thank you. Back, any other member of the public wish to come forward and speak on this topic? Seeing nobody. Back to the board with no further discussion. All in, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up. Go ahead, Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I have a question. So if we approve this, let's say we approve this tonight...
To table, or...
No, no.
The motion that's on the table is to table, but if we approve the projects?
Yes, if we approve the projects. Do we have the ability then, if we find that we are tight on the operating budget, to then go back and take off some of the projects? If we find that it's starting, that our operating budget is starting to creep into essential instructional items?
We would have the ability at a future meeting to bring this back up if we wished to, if the majority of the board wanted to, and give updated advice to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and the RTM, recognizing that there is a difference between capital money and operating money. This is bonding about $3 million, which we bond in the neighborhood of 1 percent bonds. And so the impact on an operating budget of deferring one of these projects, or two of these projects, is de minimis in terms of, you know, it's not like we're trading equal dollars for operating versus capital. And so in my estimation, we probably would, I would not assume we would do that. And really, the bodies that handle the financing of it, which is the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and RTM, if they, as they get more information on the finances of the town, were to decide that, why don't we postpone some of these projects, they're fully able to do that. Our job, I think, is to present what are the needs of the students relative to facility development, and then the town's bodies decide how much can we afford this year. So I think they're in a better position to make that judgment in terms of affordability. It'll have, if we cut out any one of these projects, it'll have a de minimis impact on this year's operating budget or any year's operating budget. So to, the motion that's in front of us is to table the motion that the Board of Education approved, the proposed capital non-reoccurring projects for 2017-2018. This is a motion to table. All in favor of the motion to table, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Maxon, Cunnelli, the motion to table loses 3 to 6.
Five.
Three to five, yes, thank you. So back to the main motion. Are there questions on the main motion relative to any of the projects? Mr. Llewellyn.
Yeah, I'll go again. Could I move to divide, please? As in the past years, prior to, actually, I think, your chairmanship, these were voted on individually, or many budget items were voted on individually. So I would like to move to divide.
There's a second? Want to advance argument why it's necessary to divide each of these?
Yes, because I think some of them are, given the constraints that we have in town this year, given the size of the increase, given that there are educational issues that we seem to be deferring, certain things may not be as critical. When we had a discussion, Mr. Cullen laid them out, saying all were equal, and no one was more critical than the other. The follow-up information on the HVAC system goes to show that in the last two, so in '16-'17, we spent $260. In '15-'16, we spent just about $1,000. We did spend almost $7,000 in '14 and '15, but the year before that was under $1,000. You know, this was described to us as, as, as needing band-aiding for the last five years. It's a unit that's failing. I'm not sure that, you know, that may be the case, and this may not be the year we need to do that. I also think that the school parking lot, for example, there will be construction going on there this summer. To defer that for a year might actually not be a bad idea. We heard contradictory things about the parking lot, that it could be done in six hours, yet it's good to let it rest for a while to have things ride over it. So I think we should move to divide and potentially not approve some of these.
Any comments from the board about dividing? Any comments from the board about dividing? Mrs. Carnell?
I guess the question is, why have we moved to make it an all or none vote as opposed to dividing the items?
I don't know that Mr. Llewellyn is correct, and that it's only been since I've been chair that we have acted on this booklet as a total. My memory is that we've approved these... This booklet in total, as opposed to individual projects unless... Mr. Cullen, do you have any different memory?
No, it's been well over five years that we've voted on the whole booklet at once.
So I guess I'm correct? Prior to you.
Okay, so, yeah, it's my fault.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Appreciate that.
Okay, I guess through the chair, Mr. Cullen, was there an advantage or disadvantage when each item was voted on, as opposed to the whole thing being grouped together?
No, I don't recall an advantage or a disadvantage. I would like to add one thing with the discussion.
Please.
One of the projects requires a building committee, the Tomlinson Middle School roof, because we will be seeking reimbursement. That does take some time.
Yeah, I think my personal opinion is that there's probably support for each one of these projects. I take Mr. Cullen at his word that each is has its... Is important to the students at that particular school. And so I'm willing and ready to act on this as a single proposal. Any other debate among the board? If not, it's also another motion that goes out to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment on dividing the motion? Seeing nobody coming forward, back to the board.
Do you do this for a time issue? Because it will be more timely if we vote per issue. According to Mr. Cullen, it's not a positive or a negative either way. And to your point, Chairman Dwyer, you said that each student at their school probably wants things, but maybe there's certain things that don't need to be addressed today. Even the state came down and said they're going to do less in bonding of construction.
I think it's just as well that we act on the proposal in total and not divide it out. That's just my viewpoint.
Okay, this is no reason, it's just your viewpoint. There's no rhyme or reason.
So we all have our own viewpoints, yes.
I'm saying, then what is your reason?
I have my own viewpoint, thank you. Back to the board for a vote. All in favor of dividing the proposal, and I presume when you say that, Mr. Llewellyn, you mean each of the four acted on separately, correct?
Six.
Each of the six. I was thinking of the four pictures. Each of the six would be acted on separately. All in favor of dividing the proposal, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Max and Cunnelli. So we're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the capital non-reoccurring projects? Any comments from the public on the main motion, which is approval of the capital non-reoccurring projects that are contained in the booklet? Seeing nobody come forward. The motion is that the Board of Education approve the proposed capital non-reoccurring projects for 2017, '18. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Max and Cunnelli, opposed. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, and Mr. Llewellyn. The motion passes five to three. Thank you. We're on to approval of policies, and so we'll take them in the order that they're there. Thank you very much. Oh, Mr. Cullen, thank you. The recommended motion for the first policy is that the Board of Education approve Policy 3520.13, Student Data Protection and Privacy slash Cloud-Based Issues. Mrs. Max and Cunnelli makes the motion. Mrs. Gerber seconds. Any discussion that you wish to lead off with, Mrs. Max and Cunnelli?
No, I generally have my discussion guided by the questions I receive from the board, and thus I have no comments.
Any questions at the table from the board on this particular policy? Any questions from the board? No? Out to the public, any questions from the public on... Any comments from the public on Policy 3520.13, Student Data Protection and Privately Cloud-Based Issues? Seeing nobody come forward, back to the board for vote. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve Policy 3520.13, Student Data Protection and Privacy Cloud-Based Issues. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, Mrs. Lou... Oh, okay. It is unanimous, eight oh. The second policy is student records confidentiality. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve Policy 5125, Student Records Confidentiality. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Max and Cunnelli? Mrs. Gerber seconds. Again, Mrs. Max and Cunnelli, do you have any comments that you wish to make? No? Comments or questions from the board on this policy? Reminding the board that, as with in the past, we no longer get paper copies of these. These will be put on the website, and that's where they can be referenced for any member of the public or the board. Seeing no questions from the board, out to the public, any member of the public that wishes to come forward and talk about Policy 5125, Student Records Confidentiality? In all confidence, please step forward. Nobody coming forward, thank you. Back to the board. Motion is that the Board of Education approve Policy 5125, Student Records Confidentiality. All in favor, please raise your hand. And it is unanimous, eight to zero. Thank you very much. Your honor, roll. We're on with a new first reading of Policy 5145. Mrs. Max and Cunnelli?
Yep. So this is the one that there was also an additional copy at your... At the table. This one, we went through a couple rounds on, getting some questions answered, and reordering, and hopefully making it communicate what we needed it to communicate. But as always, I don't know if anyone's looked it over and has some questions for us now?
This isn't any different from the policy that we got in our Friday packet, is it? It's the same, correct?
That's what I'm just looking side by side.
I know, I just wanted to make sure.
I don't see any. Mr. Coyne, is he out there?
It's the same.
Yep.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, seeing no questions from the board, this policy will be placed on the next regular meeting agenda, which will be the end of the month, the same date that we are approving the budget. On to new approval of minutes. The recommended motion is that the Board...
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Excuse me. I didn't know if Mrs. Carnell wanted to say something about that policy.
Not about this policy. No, no, you didn't see me.
I was waiting for the committee reports for that.
Okay. Fair enough. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes, that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 13, 2016. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Gerber? Seconded by Ms. Pitko. Any questions from the board? Seeing none. The motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 13, 2016. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitko, Mrs. Max and Cunnelli, opposed. Abstain. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, and Mr. Llewellyn. The minutes are approved, five, zero, and three. On to superintendent's report.
Okay. I have a couple of things tonight, and first of all, just one more time, want to say thank you again to the senior staff and all of our principals, and for helping me prepare for the budget presentation tonight, and especially to Dorian Muncel. I can see her face now while I'm looking at her. Thank you so much for all the work that you and your staff do. I know you do it every year, but this year had an exceptional, I think, difficulty, me having only been here five weeks, so thank you. In the superintendent's report, I'll start with the racial imbalance. We did travel to Hartford. I was very grateful Dr. Tidal joined us, as well as Chair Dwyer. It was nice to have Dr. Tidal there, because he has so much history and knew, you know, the board members. And as they put their questions forward, it was pretty evident that what they really were looking for is more detail in our plan and more of a timeline. And if you haven't had a chance to... I know I sent the board an update, but I also sent the McKinley families just a letter and an update that outlined what the expectation will be over the next 120 days. And what they're asking for is really benchmarks. And when are we going to do what we say we're going to do inside the plan? And they're calling for additional measures, and this is the language that they approved, beyond the pre-kindergarten and open choice measures described in Section 4. So if we've mentioned it, and it doesn't mean that we have to do it, what it means is they want to know what we are doing. So when are we engaging the community? From my perspective, and that was my first meeting with Connecticut, you know, State Board, and the previous meeting had not been recorded, so I couldn't watch it. There was a feeling, I believe, that the specifics of what we were doing were missing in that they really wondered, had we engaged the community? Well, and as you know, Dr. Tracy had gone out and met with the PTA when he was here as interim superintendent, but I think they really want all the detail of all the work that we have done and are doing going forward. And it really is about documenting, what is it that we are doing? We do mention in our plan redistricting, and I know that's a really scary word in this town, and when we've gone through it in the past, and the thought of having to even think about that. But I do believe that in this plan, they want to know, are we having those discussions? Not... It's not exactly what are we doing, what discussions are we having? And even looking at the Malone and McBroom, they felt as though, and they did comment, that we hired an excellent consultant firm to help the school board last year in some of the decision-making. So we will be working, actually, staff Mike Cummings and I are meeting tomorrow to start the legwork on preparation, to bring something back to the board. You do have to approve the amended plan, which also means we will have a public hearing that is required for us. And so we'll go back through the process again, pretty much what you went through earlier this year. So that's where we are right now, and we hope to have something for you in the coming weeks.
I want to compliment the parents of McKinley School, who provided information to the State Board of Education, and to two parents in particular who traveled up to Hartford for the early session of the public hearing portion of it, not the public hearing, the public comment section of it, and then stuck around for the presentation that we made at 11 to about 12:30. They made a difference in terms of the members of the Board of Education understanding that we were serious about finding a permanent solution. You should know that I told them that we do not look forward to every two years appearing before them on this subject, just as they do not like to have us there every two years on this same subject. I think they have taken us at our word, but they do want some measures of what is the investigation you're doing on the two prime ideas that you've added to the plan, and that's the magnet program. And if that does not work in following construction, are you seriously engaging the community in a discussion on redistricting? Because that doesn't happen overnight. And so that's the nature of the changes that will happen to the plan. January is budget time, so I'm assuming that this will get before the board at the February and March meeting, so that we can then get it back to the state within their 120 days. So questions from the board. Mrs. Max and Cunnelli, followed by Mrs. Lou McCormick.
So a few questions. First of all, regarding engaging the community, because obviously we did engage the community. You know, there had been the subcommittee that had been doing work on redistricting. Now, that was more from a population perspective, but we had engaged there. We'd had our meetings here with public comment on it. And so is there something more specific than that that they qualify to? Because we clearly engaged the community on multiple occasions on this.
I'm going to say that we engage the community in terms of, here's what we're thinking, what comments do you have? I believe that they're thinking, if you're going to go down the magnet school program, you need to have a more robust conversation with the host school parent body. You have to have a more robust conversation with the town. What kind of program would cause them to gravitate to have their student move from their neighborhood school to McKinley, and therefore participate in the magnet school? So I don't want to say that one is fact-based and the other is sales-based, but I think from an engagement point of view, that they want to see that we're engaging the community in dialogue with the intended result of getting either the magnet program and/or the redistricting, something that the town would accept.
So that while we did it, it was on a more general scope? They're looking for engaging them. Now what's the feedback on these two specific components?
Yes, and if along the way, a third idea surfaces, then of course explore the third idea.
Okay.
And that's... Yeah.
Okay. And then my second question is that I assume at some point, probably very shortly, because 120 days will fly, how are we going to go about the process of formulating a timeline of our own work to meet the state deadline?
We are actually meeting on that tomorrow. And so after we get together, it will be starting to think about everything the board has talked about with the community, and starting to do a draft timeline as a starting point, as a jumping off point. I do think it's important, following up on the question you asked beforehand, to also in a timeline, reflect back on what we have done. They talk about technical assistance, but I'm not sure they remember that we actually engaged technical assistance about six or seven years ago. So we want to reflect back and then also go forward on what we're going to continue to do. So we'll have a draft for you to start with a skeleton.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Is that it? Mrs. Lou McCormick?
So just so... I just want to clarify what their response was again. So it was... It presented to them... My understanding was that we had approved the pre-K and the open choice as our solution. Does it... It now sounds as if they've come back and said, no, I want to also see the redistricting in the magnet school? Is that what's happened? Or what is it that they've approved? Or what is it... What do they think our plan is exactly?
So that's a good question. From my perspective, we said that we cannot come to a permanent solution until the two schools are built out. But in the meantime, we'll move the preschool, we'll increase open choice as interim measures to mitigate the impact at the moment, while we explore the other two ideas, the magnet program and redistricting. They felt, the attorneys for the Board of Education felt, that the only two ideas that we put in there were the first two that you mentioned, and that the others were concepts that needed to be fleshed out. So how are you going to investigate a magnet program? Give us some timelines, so we know that you are doing it, that you're diligently following up on it. Same thing for racial imbalance, same thing for redistricting. So they viewed that we only came up with two ideas. I viewed that we had four ideas, just that two were only generally stated. So they want more specifics. Would you have any further comments on Mrs. Lou McCormick's question?
No, I think that states it well.
You still have the floor.
Yeah, so that's... I'm still not clear exactly on that answer. So you think you presented four. They think that there's only two, and yet they still... So they're okay with us doing the expansions with those two?
Correct.
Period.
Yeah, no.
They just happen to want details on what we were thinking regarding the others? Or those two are required as part of the solution?
They gave conditional approval in support of the first two ideas, and asked for more specifics on how you're going to investigate the last two ideas.
So we haven't resolved the problem in their eyes? It won't be resolved until we figure out redistricting and magnet school?
Or a third option?
Or whatever the next thing is. Okay.
It won't be resolved in their eyes until we no longer dance around the 25% number. They want to see that number get down to the 15% level instead of the 20... I think it's currently 27%. So they want to see that it's actually changed, and that you have a proposal that is... is likely to result in that, and they see the results of the preschool and the open choice as making marginal differences, but not...
Solving it.
Huh?
Not solving it.
But not solving it on a permanent basis. The only idea of solving it on a permanent basis is those last two ideas, and they want some more information on how we're going to investigate those two.
Okay, so this brings me, this kind of brings us full circle to where we had the discussion before, that we are doing expansions, et cetera, with the idea that that accompanied by the other two strategies would have been it. But it's not it, which brings us back to redistricting and magnet school, which inadvertently might be redistricting, because if you turn a school into a magnet school, there may be shifting, not quite redistricting, but kind of the movement of students around two different schools now and busing across town and doing all this stuff. So I guess my question is, is are we then getting ahead of ourselves by creating extra capacity when if we had just bit the bullet and did the redistricting that everyone dreads, or done the magnet school properly upfront, that we could have actually used the excess capacity within the district without having to spend millions of dollars to add more capacity in a declining population town?
And that's an argument that was made when the plan was initially approved, and when this plan comes back before the board for revision, that would be a time to raise those arguments again as to whether that is something that we should look at in a more immediate basis. Tonight, it's more just to report on what happened at the State Board of Education. We'd have to put an item on the agenda to have, I'll say, full-throated discussion and debate on it. Did anybody else raise their hand with a question? Did you? Mr. Lowell?
Sure. You had mentioned that they would like to see us around 15%. Was that you choosing words, or did they come out and say something along those lines?
I'm choosing words that by state regulation, once a school gets above 15%, and for the public's education, whatever the average of the elementary school, or middle school or high school, whichever we're talking about, whatever the average percentage of non-Carcasian students there are, you can't be more than 15% higher, or you become impending. And then if you become 25% higher, so if we're at 20% now, any school that is over 45% is racially unbalanced. Any school over 35% is impending. And so their target would be to get us down to the 15% level, so that we're, we're neither impending or, and so that's why I use the 15%.
I appreciate that insight. So if the first two are conditionally approved, the first two being the kindergarten and the open choice, pre-K, sorry, thank you, they're not approved until we go back in 120 days? Is that correct?
If you're saying this board has freedom to advance the plan in any way we want, and if that was to withdraw support for those two ideas because we came up with a third idea that was going to solve the problem, and a majority of this board felt that's the way to go, as long as it solves the problem, the board, the State Board is not dictating to us how to do it. They like the fact that we are doing things to mitigate it right now, the preschool and the open choice, but their end goal is to solve, solve the issue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board? So again, we'll give the staff time while they're working on the budget to also work on this, and that we'll start getting it on the agenda in February and March for action, so we can meet the deadline of submitting the report to them within the 120 days. Anything else?
Just a couple more things. Just another mention on the ECS funding, just to let you know that I have met with First Selectman, Mr. Tetra. We are trying to work together on this, and we'll both be watching, you know, the budgets, obviously, as we go through the year. So I just want to mention that we are working together closely. Also, I did attend meetings on Holland Hill, and I just feel like as the school superintendent, I want to be able to say that, you know, we're very aware, I think it's school and also the building committee and Mr. Quinn, that the first number that came in on the conceptual drawings was very high. And we are working closely together. We had a meeting, I want to say, oh, about two weeks ago, my weeks are running together, but about two weeks ago, just to make sure that we could look at what was in the conceptuals. And when I say we, that was Tom Collin and his staff, Mr. Dwyer was there, also the architect was there, the construction firm was there, really looking at, okay, what's in the actual ed specs? What is it that is in the ed spec conceptuals? And making sure that we're all on the same page. We have another meeting again on Thursday. I do feel like we're moving in, in the right direction. I think the number that came out early scared everybody to death, but again, numbers are what numbers are, but the work is just beginning. And so I just want to assure you that there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, and we're at the very early phase of this project, so. Also, the Osborne Hill project, I think someone will probably speak to that tonight, but I was at that meeting as well. And the other thing I want to mention is the Ward and Ludlow musicals. I heard, even when I was interviewing, actually, the board had shared, oh, if you have the opportunity, you know, you have got to see both of the high school musicals that happened in December. I call it the musical, that's probably not the best way, but they were just fabulous. And so I just, you know, want to acknowledge that you were right, and the interesting thing was they were both different. You know, it's not like they get together and they plan this amazing thing, they both do two amazing, different shows. But I just, the amount of time that went into that, on the students and the staff and the creativity and just the talent, but I just, I have to mention that. I also do want to mention the brown bag on Thursday. I mentioned it very briefly, but it will be in here at 12 o'clock, and that's just an opportunity for anybody who wants to come and ask questions about the budget, and we will do our very best to get answers for you and just an open dialogue. And if we don't know the answer, we will find it out and get that for you. So I encourage you and welcome you to come to that. And I think that's it. I will mention on my first day back after the holidays, I had a lovely visit at the Early Childhood Center, and that was, it was just, that was a fantastic school visit, and they were, they've all been terrific. But I actually thought I had been to the Early Childhood Center when I was visiting Ward and I saw the Early Childhood classroom. Well, I thought that was the same thing. So when I actually realized it had its own entrance, it's its own building, it was just, it was fabulous. So thank you to all of the staff that welcomed me in their buildings. I can't wait to get back out again, so thank you.
And for those who may be new to the idea of a brown bag meeting, you do not have to bring a brown bag to attend, and some people do bring a brown bag with lunch, because we don't provide lunch. So, any questions for the superintendent in the report that she gave? If not, committee liaison reports? Do we have any committee liaison reports? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
I just wanted to update the board on how we are doing with the CAPE audit. At this point, if you recall, we had them broken into different categories, and we are now seven shy of finishing the massive pile of ones that were basically driven by state mandate. One of those seven is graduation requirements, which in discussing with Mr. Cohen, I personally voiced the idea, I don't think this is something that the policy committee should take up until the state finalizes what it's going to be requiring. It's just there are some significant things that are still up in the air with that, and that's one of the remaining seven. So those other six, at the pace that we're moving, we really should have them done within a month or two. Okay, a few months. That then leaves us with a, the third pile coming out of the CAPE audit, which involved policies that are suggested. They're recommended. They're not driven by anything, but they're thought perhaps to be good practice, and so we'll be looking through those. But Ms. Cornell had mentioned in policy and asked me to bring up here, to just put out to the board the notion of if there has been a policy issue that you thought that the committee should address. Up until now, we have been very focused on the results of the CAPE audit and thinking that those really are the requirements. There's something that's out of compliance or that needs to be updated, but we are finally seeing the end of that. And so I had told Ms. Cornell that I would, I thought that was an interesting idea, that I would bring that to the board, and so I put that out before you. And I've never done that in the five years I've been on the policy. We've always been, had, been very busy with things coming to us, either from the full board or from state issues. So it's not that I have an idea in mind of how we would proceed with anyone's ideas, but I, I believe, Ms. Cornell, if you, if there's, if I didn't articulate that well, or there's anything you'd like to add, so just to, just to give you that update.
No further comments on that? That covered what you were talking about? Okay, two thumbs up.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other committee liaison report that people need to make? Ms. Gerber?
Yeah, just for Osborne Hill. As Dr. Jones mentioned, the building committee went before the Board of Selectmen last week. Well, firstly, they've gone in December, and then the vote was deferred until last week's Board of Selectmen meeting. This is for the connector, which is still trying to get funding. And so basically, there were two options before the Board of Selectmen, the one that the building committee had unanimously approved and recommended, but there was a less expensive one, and that is the one that the Board of Selectmen ended up going with. So that will now go to the Board of Finance, I believe, on February 7th. And if it is approved by the Board of Finance, then it will go on to the RTM, and then hopefully they can start getting work on that and get it in, over the summer. So I'll keep everyone posted.
You should know that both Mrs. Gerber and I, I wouldn't say testified, but presented to the Board of Selectmen that we thought that the more substantial bricks and mortar was a better proposal if you look at the life cycle cost of construction. They have, I'll say, a 20-year lifespan on the $275,000 proposal before you have to start replacing all of the panels. There is a $475,000 proposal that had a 40-year lifespan, 50-year lifespan. When you do the math, that we'll get 25% reimbursement on that, then 20 years from now, we'll probably be paying more to replace those panels, because dollars to donuts, they won't make them anymore, and, or whatever they're making will fit differently than what our structure is. And so in the long run, it's going to count, cost this town more money in the long run. We, we made that argument, not successfully, perhaps some of the other town bodies who take a longer view of what's in the best interest of the town might, might address that as a question. Not that I'm speaking to anybody in the particular in the audience. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
So just to clarify, the Board of, while the RTM can't vote to put money back, the Board of Finance can?
That's my understanding, yes. Any other?
All right, I just wanted to let the topic move.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from, from Mrs. Gerber? Go ahead.
No, I was, for PTA Council.
Okay, PTA Council.
Just a couple of updates. This is especially for the public. Just a couple of things that PTA Council is working on at the moment. First of all, they, it comes up at every meeting, bears repeating every time, that they have grant money available for a variety of community service opportunities. And so for the PTA members, for any who are still left, to just please go back to your PTAs, and for anyone on the board who knows of any projects percolating out there, the PTA Council is very eager to fund these type of community service projects. They had one that just passed PTA Council for funding from Burr Elementary, working with a school in Bridgeport. And it's just, it's an opportu, great opportunity for our kids and a great opportunity for the PTA to get some financial support for those ideas. They're also in the midst, the Executive Board of, the PTA Council, doing some community outreach with some of Fairfield teams, doing work with the Bridgeport Community Kids Center. And additionally, Fairfield, Ludlow and Fairfield Ward have applied for some of that grant money that I just referenced, and they'll be doing a Valentine's Day luncheon down at the Senior Center here in Fairfield. So lots of good work out there, it just needs people to bring their ideas forward, but there is funding to support it, and PTA Council is eager to hear those ideas.
Any questions? If not, Ms. Pitko.
So Wednesday, January 18th, at 7:30, Septa's going to have a meeting over at McKinley School. For anybody who's not special at PTA, they're having a presentation, the ABCs of Your Child's IEP, and Introduction to Challenger Baseball.
Any other reports from board members? If not, let me comment a little bit more on the Holland Hill project. 13.3 is in our capital projects budget and on the waterfall chart. The initial number came in at 21 million, I'm rounding. I will say that site work came in at about $2 million, a little bit over. Our staff do not have the engineering background to adequately price out the site costs in a particular location. And so while we called for sprinkling the whole building, did not take into account that the water pipe coming into the property is undersized, and so it has to be replaced from the street in. That, together with other items, when we think of 13.3 million, add 2 million to that, and you can easily see 15-something. We normally inflate our budgets to the date that we approve the budget and send it on to the other town bodies, because the length of time it takes to get through the other town bodies, we would only be guessing at what the bid date would be. So our practice has been to inflate the cost through to the year that we approve it. They have added another 18 months correctly because of when they think it's going to be bid. So then if you add those two together, you could easily get yourself to 16, 16 and a half. The building committee, when they looked at our ed specs and then looked at the building and compared it to Riverfield, added square feet to the building. And the other thing they did was they took five classrooms that are currently serving as classrooms, took them out of commission for other purposes, which meant they had to reconstruct those five classrooms. And the advice that we gave them is, once we build a classroom, we really don't repurpose it, because then we're just spending money to build it twice. So they're looking at the drawings. They'll present some new concepts to us on Thursday. I think the initial expectation from the chair, Mr. Quinn, is that he thinks that easily, now, I, I will say just 2 million could be taken out of the project costs. I honestly think that more than that will come out in order to bring it down to a, an acceptable number. In the past, when we've had overruns of a whatever amount, we have been able to adjust programs within the waterfall chart, projects within the waterfall chart, to account for that and still help the town stay within their 10%, no more than 10% spent on bonding. If we were to spend 5 to 7 million more on this project, that could not be absorbed in just a simple, you know, shift a couple of projects around, which means that it would have to come back to the board and say, what significant project would you move off to another year if we can't bring these project costs down to a reasonable number? But at the moment, unless the building committee, the building committee only comes back to the Board of Ed on one of two occasions. One is they want to change the ed specs. At the moment, the building committee is not proposing that. They're proposing that the areas that they went beyond the ed specs, they'll bring back to the ed specs, and through value engineering, and so those are the two approaches they're taking. So they're not thinking they're going to be coming back to us and asking us to change the ed specs. The second occasion that they come is that they just simply want to give an update, or we ask them for an update is where we stand. I suspect that after a couple of weeks where they've met and figured out where they want to go, that probably the February meeting is when they would be giving us an update on the, on the plan. And the comment that I made at the Board of Finance, this town has always had a, I'll say, a debate. Do we take a building and fully renovate it, bring it up to speed, and say that we don't have to go back to that building for another 25, 30, 35 years? Or do we make the changes needed for the next 10-year horizon and then come back to the building? And I'll say, unfortunately, Osborne Hill is an example of that, where they did what they needed. they needed to do to solve the PCB problem, but the general renovations of the building never happened. And then, how soon can we get back to that building to bring that building up to snuff in terms of the general renovations of the building? So that's the conundrum we have as a, as a board and as a town, how much money can you invest in one project without it impacting another project? So, so that's where the conversation is being taking place. They've presented to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, both boards said, go back and rethink this, and then come back and visit us again. So that's where they stand. Ms. Pitco.
I was at the Board of Finance meeting with you, and I, I have a clarification, when do we go back to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance meetings to present Holland Hill?
When you say "we," you mean the building committee, because once we pass the ed specs, it's in the hands of the building committee. My guess is it will take them a month to go through the cycle of talking to our staff, talking to their committee, and then at a second meeting, approving the updated schematic plan, getting pricing on it, and saying, okay, here's how much we've saved, and so probably, not wanting to guess for them, February, it might take them a month to the mid-February to the beginning of March before they're in a position to come back to those two boards and saying, here's where we are. I will say two things. There's nothing that they put forth that our staff couldn't use and couldn't benefit from within the school plans they put forward. It's not like they suggested space that is just not usable, it's a question of just what can you afford at any given time. And number two, that they are a committee that acts to themselves and reports to the Board of Selectmen, so they don't report to us. So when you ask, when will they come back to us, they'll come back first, I suspect, to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, and somewhere in between, they'll probably come back and talk to, just to update us. Now again, we could ask them to come forward to us, but unless we're saying, we want you to come back because we're going to, we want to change the ed specs to do whatever somebody wanted to do, then they have to comply with the ed specs.
Okay, I just got the impression that the Board of Finance thought we were going to revisit the ed specs, that's the reason why I brought it up. And I don't want the project to get delayed, so I'm just curious, are they expecting us to do that before the building committee brings it back in front of them?
I don't want to guess as to what the Board of Finance thinks they expected at the end of that meeting. It was not clear to me that they were referring the project to the Board of Ed. When they commented on that, I believe I was clear to them that the building committee does not report to the Board of Ed. We have no authority over the building committee, we have no ability to direct their work, and so, you know, we can comment, we can give advice, our staff can work closely with them in giving advice, as long as the board, the building committee is willing to accept that advice. Ms. Maxon, Connolly.
Two questions. First, just to clarify, that in doing any comparison between Holland Hill and Riverfield, that Riverfield did not have any of the nature of this type of site work, so in terms of comparing dollars between the two projects, I'm not saying they didn't have any, but, or perhaps you can, I don't know if you can speak to?
No, I'd say that the site work at Riverfield also came in more expensive than, than we, we, the staff, had anticipated. We had a budget and a facilities plan of, I think, 13 million. Their final approved budget came in at about 14.6, and most of that, a good chunk of that was site work, and even in the site work, they value engineered it back, probably by a million dollars. And so, so no, site work was also an issue over at Riverfield. Is that correct, Mr. Cullen? Mr. Cullen says yes.
Okay. And then my second question, just to follow up on Ms. Pitco's point, if the Board of Finance had something that it wanted to formally communicate to the Board of Ed, what is the, because I'm, in my, my five years of building committee work, I haven't heard of something like that happen, what would be the expectation of the Board of Finance as some type of official communicator? Because I watched the movie, I mean, the movie.
Moving.
The meeting also, and I agree that it, there certainly was not a definitive statement made, I mean, they, like the Board of Selectmen, were, you know, struggling with the number that they were getting and understanding where it came from and how it's going to change, because we need it to come down, but I would agree that there wasn't a definitive, this must happen. How would, if there was something that they wanted to communicate to the board, what is the process that that would be? Is there a formal motion and a vote?
No, no, the process that has always been used for all three boards, is that the chair, whether it's the First Selectmen, the Chair of the Board of Finance, or the moderator of the RTM, if they want us to consider something, or get information to them, or whatnot, then the chair of that body sends a message to Dr. Jones with a copy to myself, saying, please, would you do X? And so the mechanism is that the chair of those three bodies communicate directly to us with exactly what they're looking for.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I just had a question. I had heard that apparently there is a new revised set of drawings that was sent to the building committee, and that looked as if they've already started to kind of be able to tighten things up.
Correct, they sent, they, they got delivered today to the central office, I think.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, and that, those drawings will be the subject of the conversation that Dr. Jones referenced among staff on Thursday.
And also, when is the next time the building committee is meeting? The Holland Hill Building Committee?
It was scheduled for the 12th, but Mr. Quinn has canceled that meeting in deference to the fact that, why don't we have the conversation on those new plans, and then get them to the architect and contractor to price out, and that it didn't make sense to have a building committee meeting to discuss how we can save money if there's no numbers to talk about. So he has not yet called a replacement meeting date for that, the one that he just canceled today, but that's where we are in the meetings.
Thank you.
Only one last comment, for both the board and the public. There was, I'll say, broad support within the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance for this project. The conversation was not, should we do it? It's, let's make sure that we, we're doing it in the most efficient and effective way possible. I didn't sense from either of those bodies that there was opposition to the project, it was more wanting to make sure that they did their due diligence. I may be wrong on that, but that's my guess. Any other committee liaison reports? Okay, on to open board comment, any comments from the board? Okay, I'll go around this way, Mrs. Maxon, Connolly.
Just to repeat Dr. Jones's comment and to beat Mr. Patton to his comment, having attended Carillon, I just wanted to reiterate your praise. Last year was my first time going to Carillon, this year was my second, and it's completely different and blows your mind in a whole different way. I mean, I will say this, anyone who has a child who plays a string instrument and they're thinking that it's too somber or too serious an instrument, I don't know if there's a tape of the Carillon concert, but they have to see what that chamber orchestra did with strings. It was unbelievable, I wish I knew the name of one of the, I didn't know if it was possible to dance with a cello, but it was just incredible, or I'm not sure if it was a bass, I apologize, but just again, through Dr. Jones to your staff, just a wonderful job.
Ms. Pitco.
She beat me to it. I actually attended both of them, and always blown away, just amazing.
So I'm sure there's something new that you can say about that.
Oh, I will add to my fellow board members and Dr. Jones's comment for, I too, this is actually the first year that I got to attend both Carillon and Candlelight this year, and I got to take my daughter, who was in Carillon, to the Candlelight concert. So it was interesting to see the, you know, the differences in the two shows, you know, both seamless, you know, nights of entertainment with, you know, no stopping, no applauding until the very, very end, but just the, the music staff and the directors of all the different groups are just phenomenal. And tonight, while I missed most of tonight's meeting, I was at the Woods Music Concert for 7th grade, and even there, just amazing what, what our music staff can do with 7th graders. I was a music kid growing up, and in high school, I was in some groups that won some awards and some national competitions and stuff, but the groups in Fairfield across all levels, elementary on up, I don't think I've ever seen a music department like this before, or heard it. So kudos to all the staff on a great season.
Yeah. Mrs. Gerber?
I'll just really quickly say, I also really enjoyed the, the Candlelight Concert I went to at Ludlow. I was not able to make the Carillon because I was driving home from Philadelphia. But I did want to say, I just got word today that we had 17 students receive recognition from the Connecticut Regional Scholastic Arts Award Program, so just a huge number of students at both high schools and Roger Ludlow and Tomlinson Middle School, and so this is a statewide competition, and there's information here if anyone's interested in checking out the website, and they're going to be having an exhibit, I believe, in a week or two up in Hartford. And also, I just wanted to mention, I was also just told today that a former Osborne Hill student, now present Fairfield Woods student, is going to be appearing on the junior version of Chopped on Tuesday night.
Uh-huh.
Unfortunately, we have a meeting, but I'll take it.
I'll only make a comment that in, at your place is the list of committee and liaison assignments, you'll note that it is unchanged from the prior year, no one requested any changes. If the column all the way over to the right where it says "normal meeting schedule," if in between a year ago and now, if you have changed any meeting schedules here and that you know of, just send me an email so I can update the report accordingly, and Ms. Carnell already covered your change. This is the new item added as a result of the bylaws, out to the public for any comment that you wish to make at this time on agenda items that have been put before us. Seeing nobody coming forward, on to adjournment, that this regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourned? Do I have a motion, Mrs. Gerber? Seconded by Ms. Carnell, all in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous with 9-0. Thank you, Mr. Patton.